Happy Halloween, everyone. Some people are late. Come on, if you're gonna be dancing, come on in. So, I do want to tell everyone that we at the planning board take our work very, very seriously.
And the work and the concern of our citizens very, very, very seriously. But you can have fun along the way. And so, life is short and we celebrate it. Also, the Commission is a big proponent of diversity. We not only talk the talk, we walk the walk. So, those who wish to participate, we embrace you in our fund. But those who choose not to participate for personal reasons or religious reasons, we understand that too. We celebrate everyone at the Commission, young and old, every sexual orientation, every race, every religion, all levels of ability. That is who we are at the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. So I just wanted to say that at the outset, do not get it twisted. We begin every Planning Board meeting also with an announcement of, and a moment of silence for those who have passed on. This past intervening week, we lost Congressman John Conyers Jr., who was 90 years young. He was Congressman representing Michigan and co-founder of the Congressional Black Caucus, who was elected to the House of Representatives in 1964 and was re-elected 26 times, spanning 10 presidents. And he also helped create the national holiday in the name of Martin Luther King Jr. Kay Hagan, age 66, the former U.S. Senator from North Carolina, served one term after a victory over incumbent Elizabeth Dole. She was remembered as a crucial partner in the passing of the Affordable Care Act and the 2009 economic stimulus package. John Weatherspoon, age 77, actor and comedian, known for his humorous roles in Friday, Boomerang, and House parties, also appeared on TV shows like Good Times and What's Happening. Gerald Bailey's, former Virginia governor from 1986 to 1990, victims of the off-campus homecoming party near Texas A&amp;M University, two killed and nearly a dozen injured, and the victims of the costume party shooting in Long Beach, California, three dead and nine injured. We also continue to keep the victims of natural disasters in our thoughts, the wildfires in California and the North Texas struck by 10 tornadoes. Could we have a moment of silence, please? And this extends to any of you who may have suffered a loss in your family or amongst your friends, of which I am unaware. Thank you. I will also say that this Saturday, November 2nd, is the Run for Wildlife. It's the 24th Annual Jug Bay 10K, 5K Run and 3K Walk at Patuxent River Park. It is hosted by the Commission's Park Rangers and proceeds benefit conservation projects and research aimed at preserving the Patuxent River's natural wildlife. Upcoming educational meetings for the countywide sectional map amendment for Prince George's County's new state-of-the-art zoning ordinance will take place. State-of-the-art zoning ordinance, there you go, there you go. Will take place Thursday, November 7th, at the College Park Airport Operations Building; Thursday, November 21st, at the Prince George's Sports and Learning Complex at the Wayne K. Curry Building; and Saturday, November 23rd, at the Southern Regional Technology and Recreation Complex. And we are closing out Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and so reminding everybody to do what you need to do, get checked out. It can be treated and addressed if you're caught in time. So do what you need to do and make sure you get your annual mammogram. And by the way, breast cancer affects men as well. And there we have the Census 2020 announcement. We're going to be running this throughout the year and all next year because we want to make sure that every Prince Georgian is counted. We had a severe undercount in 2010, which resulted in the loss of $363 million to the county, which would have benefited us in terms of transportation, services, education, so much more. We do not want to leave money on the table. We want to make sure that every Prince Georgian is counted. We lose $18,250 per person over the decade, and we want to make sure that everyone is counted. We are not leaving money on the table. Right, Graham? Right, Graham? Okay. Right, there we go. There you have it. There you have it. Okay. And finally, finally, two words. Can we say "girlness"? Can you say "world champion"? Okay. Awesome. And it didn't look that way in the beginning, but yeah, we pulled through. So first item on the agenda is the draft minutes of the Planning Board meeting of September 19th and September 26th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there anyone here to oppose the staff's recommendations on items 4A, 4D, or 4E, or any board member who wishes to discuss these items? Yes?
Correction for one of the resolutions for Greenbelt Metro. Chris Davis is here.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Are you dressed up as Christopher Davis, David?
Yes, sir. Staff would like to bring to the Board's attention a minor staff correction to page 17 of Resolution Number 19-118, and it is just for a correction to the finding numbering.
Correct.
Correction. It's in the third paragraph on page 17, the last sentence of the third paragraph. It should say finding 18 instead of five.
That's 4A, though. Item 4A?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes, 4A.
Thank you. Okay, and that's it?
Correct.
With that correction, is there a motion?
With that correction, there is a motion for staff finding. There's a motion to move for the adoption of staff findings and approval of items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendation of staff considering correction.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have a zoning case eligible to be heard, which is A10051, Carosa property. Is there any request to hear on the part of the Board, or any desire to hear? Seeing none, the staff recommendation will be transmitted to the county. Item 6, we have a draft resolution. Is anyone here to speak on the resolution? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Horn, were you here on the other matter? On what I've just called it? Item 5?
No.
Okay, thank you. So you and Mr. Tedesco have some explaining to do, but anyway, okay. Item 3C, the e-bikes and scooters.
Good morning, happy Halloween. I'm Bridgette Desney, Division Chief for Park Planning and Development at DPR. And today, Sonya Ewing and Bob Patton from our Park Planning and Development Team are going to talk about a new park directive, which will initiate a pilot to just -- sorry, I was distracted by the skeleton head there. Which will talk about a pilot program for using e-bikes and e-scooters on certain hard surface trails in the county. In August, we were -- it was requested from some of our local jurisdiction partners to explore the use of e-bikes and e-scooters on our trails. And so, we are excited that the mayor from University Park is here with us today, Mayor Carey, along with folks in the University of Maryland and the town of -- or City of College Park. So with that, Sonya and Bob will take you through the park directive and the pilot. And then I also want to welcome Jay from Montgomery County. We have been collaborating with Jay and her team on the pilot and look forward to working with them into the future. And so, with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Patton, the Trail Program Manager, working in the Park Planning and Development Division of the Department of Park and Planning.
Can you raise the microphone just a little bit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that better?
That is.
Okay. I did major in public speaking, so I will harken back to my learning how to project.
Okay, so you harken back, then.
So we had a request from City of College Park, the Town of University Park, and the University of Maryland to adopt a pilot program for a rules change that would allow certain electric scooters and bicycles to be operated on our trails, which normally prohibit motorized equipment. And so, that request came in formally, and so we did some research and learned what was going on in Montgomery County. They had just started a pilot program using the park directive and the park rules that were recently adopted. And they started a pilot program in June, allowing certain electric bikes and certain scooters to operate on a select group of trails in Montgomery County. And after researching their experience and then getting to know what the University and College Park and University Park were doing in our county, we embarked on the process to do a similar type of directive. And so, the components of the request from the municipalities are shown on this slide. A key thing, I think, is that the municipalities entered into an agreement with a firm, Veo Ride, for one year to provide standard bicycles on a shared bike basis, as well as the electric bicycles and scooters. And so, we looked to create a pilot program that would coincide with what they were bringing to a small part of the county. And this slide here shows the different types of vehicles that they are providing, and they have an app and they do charge for their use. So the only fees that transpire are between the users and the company, Veo Ride, that operates the service. The issue with having these vehicles on our trails was central because the Paint Branch Trail, a part of our Anacostia Trail System, runs really right through the university campus and the heart of College Park, as well as we're a partner on the Trolley Trail, and we have other trails in the Anacostia System that are very close. Plus, Montgomery County had, in their pilot program, were allowing the vehicles on the Sligo and Northwest Branch Trails. And those trails come into our county, and we share those trail names across the boundaries. And so, it seemed like we would probably end up with users trying to use these vehicles on our trails, even if we didn't establish a pilot program. So we thought it was better to establish a program where we could gain information and study any possible negative effects, as well as possible benefits to the Commission. And so, our recommendation, my recommendation and working with other staff in the department to the Director, was to establish a pilot program that allowed the vehicles to go on the Paint Branch, Little Paint Branch, Indian Creek, Northeast Branch, Trolley Trail, Northwest and Sligo Creek Trails, as well as down as far as Bladensburg on the Anacostia River Trail. And you can see on this slide, it matches up with, it shows some of the trails in which the pilot was allowed in Montgomery County. The red markings is the service area of Veo Ride. And their goal, and the municipalities and the university asking us to be involved, their goal really was to provide this service in a limited area to help provide alternatives to motor vehicle use around the College Park area and the campus. So one thing we did was to have staff try out these vehicles. Veo Ride brought a number of them over, and we tried them, and they seemed to be operating just as built. They had speed limitations, so they did not go faster than manually operated bikes and scooters on the trail system. And so, after experiencing that and understanding how they operate and what the agreement was between Veo Ride and the municipalities, we thought we should go forward with doing a park directive to do a pilot program, really quite the same way that was done in Montgomery County. We felt it made sense to us, too. And so, that directive has been shared online via your agenda for the Planning Commission, and it has been available to you to look at the details. Our staff did find that we felt we wanted to limit and prohibit their use on certain trails in the Lake Artemisia area. And you can see on this slide, the red trails that people use for walking and enjoying nature, and also some of the pathways in the Bladensburg Waterfront Park. But we are allowing through use in both of these areas, so that people, if they're in these areas, are not totally stymied by their ability to pass through the park system. So one thing that I didn't mention is that these are dockless vehicles. However, the rules are that if you have a bike, you park it at a public bike rack. And if you're using the scooters, they are actually creating what's called a geofence, which is a virtual boundary where the vehicle has to be left. And so, when a person uses it, they sign up to use it, and their charge per minute, they have to park it at an approved parking place in order to turn the charges off and stop using the vehicle. So this is different than, I think, some of the other services, which -- and so, their approach to Veo Ride is taking, I think, is going to reduce the kind of random abandoned vehicles in various places, because they want people to put them back to bona fide parking areas. So in bringing this information to you today, as a -- and having it being proposed as a park directive, the way that the rules work is that you accept our presentation. You do not have to take any action for this to go into effect, and our plans are to have it go into effect as of tomorrow. The Veo Ride services started at the end of August, coinciding with the beginning of the University of Maryland school year, so they are already operating in their service area. And thus far, we haven't had any problems on the trail system, even though we haven't made any formal pilot program to allow them.
Just a question, Madam Chair.
Sure.
I'm just curious, so Veo Ride, you said it replaces Zaxter. Did you all explore or enter into conversations with some of the other scooter companies? There's so many now, and I just wonder how Veo Ride compares to others. You know, there's Lime, there's, well, there's just so many, so.
We -- Park and Planning wasn't involved in that search. However, the representatives from the university and municipalities are here, and they could probably answer that question.
Okay. So, who's going to come? You're going to come on down? And then I didn't, Mr. Patton, I didn't know if you weren't finished, though, were you?
Almost done.
Almost, I know, okay.
Hi, my name is Marta Woldu. I'm the Bicycle and Sustainable Transportation Coordinator at the University.
Can you keep this closed? There we go. Is that better? Yeah, and you can bring it down to you.
Okay.
Okay.
My name is Marta Woldu. I am the Sustainable Transportation Bicycle Coordinator at the University of Maryland. To the question of what other vendors have we considered and looked at, since we originally had Zaxter, which was specifically a bike-share program, we were interested in a market option that could still continue the use of bicycles in the fleet. We saw that scooters were involved, a new innovation available in the market as well. So we were really interested in models that had a combination of bicycles and scooters. And so, we saw two vendors specifically that we looked at, and one was called Gotcha, that had also a mixed fleet of bicycle, electric bicycles, and scooters, and Veo Ride. We really appreciated Veo Ride's design of their vehicles, and that was one of the ultimate factors of why we ended up selecting them. But yes, we did consider different vehicle options, different brands. We figured that would be a lot simpler than having multiple different operators, but also competing models for scooters and bikes on campus.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Patton, you may continue.
Yeah. We have been preparing, assuming that the Planning Board would approve this idea while not having to do it formally. We are prepared to start our pilot program on November 1st, tomorrow. And the important thing here is that we will also engage in a formal agreement with Veo Ride, and so we'll be able to share information. And the information that they have to operate their service will give us a good idea of how much it is used in our trail system, and give us data that we may need in the future to determine if this kind of thing should be permanent or not. So this concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. First, let me say it's good to see you. I don't get to see you here very much, see elsewhere. And I know that we have some more questions, and I'm going to start with Commissioner Dooner, because I know it's coming.
I'll start on that side, you can.
Oh, you want me? I'm starting. I looked that way first, okay.
Thank you. So, thank you for the presentation. I like the idea. I think that we should be doing this. It's helpful for just modern uses of what we see around in other metro areas, particularly inside of DC. And I see, actually, some of this already on the streets, where we have abandoned e-bikes already. And just right outside of the service area, I saw one a couple of days ago when I was riding around. But I'm glad that we're doing this on our trail system, because I think it's good, as long as it can be safe and we can regulate the speed, which it seems like from your report we can. So that way, it won't be sort of a hindrance to the other people enjoying our trail system. And it might actually promote accessibility for people who have problems going up certain grades, or just have problems going certain distances. I think that's also a way of opening up access to people who normally, or otherwise, might not be able to travel as far, or even take part in our trail system. If you can go back to Slide 9, I have three questions. Two are kind of within our control, and then the other one is just sort of like expansion of the service area. But the first main question is in the left graph, which is kind of hard to see, but in that map on the left, where we get down to the Bladensburg Waterfront, it just stops, and it doesn't go to the county line, and it is paved all the way to the county line. And that's how you can get into DC, and particularly to go down to the ballpark, that a lot of people were hopefully at the other evening. So I was wondering why we didn't extend the yellow line down at least to the county line, since it is paved and it picks up on the other side of the parking lot there. And then, also, a question that's not really inside of our jurisdiction, but the yellow line that just stops on Route 1 right there, going down, that would connect into our trail system, that is non-existent trail right now, but might be existing trail down the future, assuming that the county and S.H.A. finally come to grips with the funding and actually connect that. That would be great to have in the next phase, and if that comes online, just automatically put it in. Because that would connect on Route 1, people to come into our trail system, and that would be great. Related to that, though, I was wondering if there are county restrictions, that if people go to the end of the trail right there, if they're not able to actually get to use the e-bikes or those devices on the street right there? There's not really any safe sidewalk for a certain distance on there, but they actually could go down the street potentially to connect into our trails. And then the last question to kind of shoot you with, so you have tons of things to answer, is the service area on that bottom right-hand side of there, there's a couple of chunks that are kind of bitten out. That bottom right-hand chunk, I think, is something we need to consider if we can, where it actually kind of goes up, because you're missing the Mark Station right there.
Can we use the cursor to follow along? Who are you talking about?
The red service area, yeah. I don't know, and this might be the actual provider, that they can't do it with the geofencing or go farther enough down, but you're missing the Mark Station that goes down on the Trolley Trail. And I don't know exactly, I can't tell from the map, but I don't know if that includes all of the Riverdale Park Station, but that would be imminent to have that in there, because the college students go down to there, they study in the Starbucks down there, they're sitting in the Whole Foods and stuff like that, and they're using the Gem and the other sources around there. So being able to track where they're actually going on the bikes would be great. If it doesn't include it, we should. And hopefully, we can extend actually a little bit south of the East West Highway to pick up the Mark Station, and if you can even extend it slightly further to pick up Hyattsville, that's on the Trolley Trail System, that would allow the students to go all the way down to Bus Point Poets, or down to Franklin's, or down to the other things, and the sort of the shops and everything in the downtown Hyattsville area. That would make sense to connect all of the metropolitan, or all the smaller jurisdictions in there on our trail system to promote sort of economic integration.
Yeah. So, the municipalities have worked together to establish the service area they want to have Veo Ride serve. And so, I believe that there's been dialogue with University, excuse me, with Riverdale Park about the area of the Town Center of Riverdale? And is that in the service area? Has Riverdale Park agreed to that?
If you're going to speak, can you just come to the microphone, please, and identify yourself? Thank you.
Hey, good morning. My name is Richard. I'm the city manager for Veo Ride for College Park. So to address the question, we're still in talks with them, so nothing's guaranteed yet, but we are doing our best to extend it down there, to offer the services.
Okay, yeah, it'd be great if you could do it down to the Town Center, to get the Mark Station particularly, because if this does become an alternative way of sort of completing the last half-leg or last part of somebody's trip, then it'd be nice to have the e-bikes down to there and the scooters. And then also, if you have trouble contacting the City of Hyattsville, feel free to reach out, because we can make those connections. I'd be very surprised if they're not all about kind of getting into this, and just continuing on our trail, the Trolley Trail down there into Hyattsville, would be great as well.
Perfect, yeah, we're in talks with them right now. Thank you, appreciate it.
Can you just state your person last name again?
Yeah, so first name, Richard, last name, Shrin.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So the other two questions regarding the extension of the Trolley Trail, yes, we're assuming we would automatically extend that once that section is built. The timeline, that project is moving forward, and it's moving forward about as quickly as it can go, but the timeline is still far enough away that it was outside our pilot program. So we would have many opportunities to renew the pilot and modify the pilot by park directive. And we would anticipate doing that. Regarding the area at Bladensburg Waterfront Park, the staff at NHRD that manages the park there felt that there could be safety problems on the long boardwalk extension that's just south of the main park area, and they were really hesitant to want to formally extend scooter use in that area. We anticipate that people might come and go through, and that's something that I think on an operational basis, we can explore whether we need to adjust that. It is a challenge, and we had dialogue with Veo Ride. They service all of their vehicles and all of their service area and adjust their fleet in order to provide that service. And they actually said that initially, they would not even want a formal parking area at the Waterfront Park, because it's outside the municipalities that they've agreed to serve. And so, they wouldn't want to have scooters start to be left in Colmar Manor, Cottage City, or Bladensburg, because people had the indication that it's, they can go down there. So now, people can go on the trails for an extended ride, they just can't park and turn their ride off and stop paying, and then start up again. They can go on the trail and have to turn around and go back to be sure and leave the vehicle within the legal service area, where they can turn the pricing off and pass it on. So again, the pilot allows us to get started, and it will be very easy as time goes on and things change to expand it as appropriate, and in conjunction with Veo Ride service.
So, maybe I'm viewing this incorrectly, but I kind of see this as two separate issues, one with Veo Ride and their scooters and their bikes, then also just allowing e-bikes or e-scooters on our trails. And I don't see why we wouldn't extend the yellow line all the way down to the county border. The boardwalk is not part of the trail, I mean, you can get onto it, and you can go down there, and you can watch people fishing or look at the boats, but that's, it's paved all the way down to the city.
Well, no, the boardwalk is a core part of the trail. You have to use the boardwalk.
To get around to it, potentially. You can also actually just go through the parking lot, though. You don't have to go on the boardwalk.
Yeah.
Because I've done that, to go on the trail. Like, if you know that the boardwalk is there, you can go around on it, or you can just go through the parking lot and connect to the other side of the trail. So if they wanted to actually drive people away from the boardwalk, we could just have painting and just have people, because it's not obvious, at least right now, when the trail ends in the Bladensburg Waterfront area, where it picks up on the other side. And if you know it, if you're going through, you have maps, and you can figure it out, but it just leads right into, over the bridge and in it, it just leads right into, over the bridge and into the, the park right there and it ends right where the pavilion and the, the playground is. And it's not obvious that even though it's close, on the other side of the boardwalk is where you could actually pick up and go into DC. And if, if this is a modification of our, of our parks sort of rules or regulations, I would, I would want to see it actually go all the way down to the border. Independent of Veoride and independent of the other private contractors that are in here in their agreements, I realize that because of the distance to the service area, it might be difficult for others to do that, but there are, there are e-bike, private e-bikes that people own that would be assist bikes that would fall under this policy potentially and could be used in commuting or other, other nature to go on the trail system. And I wouldn't want to exclude them on that one section of trail and then have sort of the inability to, to connect into the other ones.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't fundamentally disagree with you, so we can bring that back to the team of staff that were considering this issue and bring your feedback back to them and, and, and get their responses. We do have, from, from this bridge here, south, we do have a significantly long section of boardwalk that you do have to use to get all the way into the district.
Marker, please, so we can follow the other cursor.
I'm sorry?
Do you have to use the red one? There's, um...
Oh, it's on the right side.
Okay, there we go, okay.
Can you right-click and make it red so we can see it better?
I can see it better now.
Right-click and make it red.
I know if you right-click, you can turn it on the pointer. I think that's what you do.
I don't know.
Okay.
Pointer options? Well, laser. There you go. Laser.
This area, this area here that I'm marking, there's a, a long boardwalk section. And we actually have, we, we have had some serious accidents with regular bicycles on that section and I just met with staff yesterday. We're looking also to, to use some paint that has some materials in it that, that can make the wooden surface better gripping. And this was tried in Montgomery County, another thing that we've learned from their approaches, that we're gonna look at trying that on the boardwalk and some other, five or six other things we were planning to do to make it safer there. But, but I can certainly take this back to the, the staff that, that made this recommendation and, and...
I'd like to see the connectivity go all the way down to the county border.
Yeah.
With DC. And I realize that they might have some issues with the small section of that, but I think those are, we can overcome those. That shouldn't be something that should eliminate the connectivity and have just sort of this dead zone where people can't come from DC.
Yeah.
Up into our county, whether it's on private e-bikes or later on when other service areas increase and people can go on other e-bikes. I think that would be, that would, that would really not be a good thing to have happen. So if we can extend that, that would be great. I don't want to see scooters like thrown into the river or in the waterfront there. And that is another fear is that you just see sort of these, these devices abandoned in some areas of DC because users aren't very careful with them. But I do want to make sure we have the connectivity on our trails and that's, that's consistently something I constantly push when we complete sidewalks, when we have trail extensions. I always want to see the connectivity and we're, we're lacking that right now in the plan.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, personally, I, I agree with that. We've just been trying to balance the different needs of different staff people and managing the different park areas. But I think we can look at that. It's a, it's a very minor change. It doesn't change the fundamental elements of the park directive, so I think we can address, we can talk about that and address that even as we, you know, go live with this because it's just a matter of mapping and public information for people.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I wanted to also mention...
Yeah, hold on, hold on a second because, because...
Oh, sorry.
Once you finish yours and then you were gonna turn to whom?
Well, I was just gonna let you know that we had extensive consultation with the lawyers working at Montgomery County Parks and with their experience and one, Montgomery County Park staff is here today if you wanted to ask them about their experience with their pilot.
I do want to get, I do want to ask her a question, but, and I also would like to hear from the mayor. He came down here early and, and see if he has any comments. And then, but we also have a question from Commissioner Geraldine.
I just wasn't clear, what provision is being made to make sure that the scooters are just not left anywhere? Because that seems to be a problem in the district, particularly with the elderly and trying to navigate between scooters that are just left on, on the street. So...
Yeah, I, I might have Richard come back up here and he can talk about how they run their operation. Parks, we don't have anything to say about their operation on the street system, the sidewalks. So we're, all we can do is, is open up the trail system that we're involved in.
Yeah, so we're preventing bikes and scooters being abandoned at ram spots by, we have a team of about seven employees, so they cover all shifts and everything is GPS tracked. So if it's online, we can track where it is and we do have, for example, you know, if someone leaves in front of a building, that's not a designated parking spot. We have a staff member that comes by in the morning or the afternoon or at night and they retrieve it and put it back in a designated parking spot. And in terms of users and to kind of like increase proper behavior in terms of parking, we do implement fines and warnings. So the first ones could be a warning saying, if you guys, you don't park in a designated spot, you know, you're gonna be charged a certain fine. So every customer that does it, they do get, you know, a notification from our customer service and in regards, like generally the second time they don't execute the same behavior again. So, in terms of how we separate ourselves from other competition, we do have a full-time staff that works around the clock to make sure that everything's parked properly.
So you're, you're relying upon the fine that you can assess against the user for not leaving the, the scooter anywhere?
So that in turn, and on top of having our full-time staff tracking all the vehicles at all times.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do you have a way in your app to take like a picture and send somebody a picture and say, this isn't how you should be parking or, or to give them like an example of here's a good way to park or here's an appropriate place and here's an inappropriate thing?
Yeah, so when they first sign up, there's like a rules and policy kind of like little page in the beginning when you first sign up for the app and it tells you all the regulations. Later, there are blue designated spots where you can park and those are the Veoride designated parking spots, either on campus or in the city.
Yeah, but, so, so I understand that, but I, I click through those things super quickly when I sign up for stuff because I just want to get on the scooter or the bike and go. If I get, if I park it in a place that I shouldn't have, do you have a way of like when you're giving them that fine, attaching an image or something and saying, here's how you park, this isn't right, please review the policies or this isn't how we'd ideally want you to, to park or this isn't a space that would be appropriate?
So the current, there's no pictures or videos, you know, displaying how to do it, but there is kind of, there's, there's a warning saying, hey, refer back to our policies, how to park, or you're gonna be assessed a fine. But we can't implement the video and pictures, kind of like a step-by-step process how to do it.
Yeah, if you can do that in like your UI or something, I think that'd be a good build out.
Yeah, we could definitely do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, did you wish to speak? You came all the way down here for all this testing.
Yes, you know, mayors and microphones are kind of gravitate to one another, I think. So asking a mayor to speak is always taking a chance. University Park is a participant in this program with, alongside the city of College Park and the University of Maryland. We, we support Bike Share, we support, we are part of the M-Bike, Zaxx R M-Bike system as well and it's, for us, it's a way of, for our town residents to get to wherever they want to go. It's a, it's a, it's a very carbon-friendly way of getting, getting to those places. And we get a good reaction from residents to that. The, the array of vehicles available, we're getting good feedback from our residents in that regard. We support the initiative with the trails of the pilot because with us, bicycles are a way of commuting and a way of, it's not just recreational, it's a way of getting around and as a way of proceeding, we try to discourage putting these vehicles onto the sidewalk. And so using streets where you can do that, that's problematic on Long Route One, but making the trails available as a pilot is a very good way and we believe it'll be a safe way to do that. My family walks on the trail, on the trolley trail a great deal and of course we're familiar with the bicycles and we're looking forward to mixing with the scooters and the e-bikes as, as we can go forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor, can you just please identify yourself for the record?
I'm sorry, I'm Len Carey. I'm mayor of University Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then I wanted to, can you come forward and, and talk about Montgomery County specifically though, please? Thank you. Identify yourself for the record.
For the record, my name is Jay Cole. I'm the chief of the park planning and stewardship division, Montgomery County Parks. Do you have a specific question or do you want me to just tell you about that?
Can you just, can you just give us a feel for how it's working in Montgomery County?
Sure. So Montgomery County, we have MOUs with Lime, Lyft and Bird is, is who are DOT is, the Montgomery County DOT is working on. They're not fully executed right now, so we started a pilot in May of this year for six months, assuming that we could sort of get a real, really good feel as to how it worked out. And they have yet to have full deployment. And if you remember, when the Lime bikes had full deployment, they were kind of everywhere. So we don't want to make a decision based on the half-deployment. We're still executing MOUs with all three. So we are doing surveys, trail surveys, to figure out, we are sort of taking the, their user conflicts on all of our, all of our trails. And so it's not a question of e-bike conflicts, it's a question of, is that the straw that breaks the camel's back? Because runners conflict with bikers, bikers conflict with, there's just a lot of stuff going on. And so we're using very specific questions in our surveys just to make sure, are you having a conflict on the trail? Not, do you hate e-scooters? Which is a different question. So, so we are in the midst of doing that. We're extending our, our pilot a year because they have not had full deployment yet. We also are sort of trying to divorce a little bit of the e-bikes, the commercial e-bikes and e-scooters from e-bikes and e-scooters' personal use. We don't want the e-bikes, there is an ADA component. People utilize e-bikes because they just don't have the ability to get up steep terrains. People have been using e-bikes on trails for forever. We don't want to sort of marry the two things so that we can't then, if the commercial aspect doesn't work, we can still have the personal aspect. We just want to make, we're trying to figure out how to have this conversation by kind, by kind of doing this with e-bikes and e-scooters, if that makes any sense, commercial versus personally used. So that's sort of where we are with Montgomery. We're going to the planning board in two weeks to extend our, our survey, I mean our directive.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cole. Other questions?
So I just want to say thank you for the comment on sort of separation because that's what I was trying to indicate earlier. It's just like I view this as two separate things, but very concurrent and there's lots of overlaps. And I'm, I'm glad to see that we're having this pilot study, but I want to make sure that we open up the trail system if it works well, based upon what you guys are having and then what we're seeing to, to everyone. So it's not just commercial, but it's also personal use and that we don't necessarily lock out personal use or connectivity for personal use because we're looking at just one commercial application. And I also want to say and just point out very specifically, I'm glad that we're interacting with both counties because this is a commission, we're at, we're at a county planning board, but we are also a commission of a bi-county region. And we have lots of things that we can learn from each other. So I'm glad to see that there's this open dialogue and that you, you have, you're a little bit farther ahead than us in this process, but we're able to get tips and figure out best practices and kind of balance off of that. And the potential, if we try new things here, we can give the feedback to you and tell you what happens on our end as well. So please do continue that, that dialogue between the two counties. That's very good.
We would love to come back and have a full commission to tell you sort of how that is working out. We were pulled into the speed, which is funny considering we're still executing MOUs now, the speed of which DOT was working, it was two weeks. We should have coordinated originally the first time, but we knew DOT was coming and it was get on the train or get left behind type situation. So hopefully now that we've learned a little bit of speed as relative, we'll be able to coordinate together more.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Debbie Tiner, acting director for the record. Commissioner Dooner, I just want to clarify something, that this is for personal use as well. So if someone had a scooter that effective tomorrow, they would be allowed. So I just wanted to clarify that it's not just for commercial use.
Yeah. Yeah, so I realize that all the yellow is basically personal and private or personally and commercial.
Good.
That's why I also wanted to make sure that yellow goes all the way down to DC. That's really the big thing. Because that, that's independent of the red, that's independent of what they're doing up in College Park.
Connectivity.
I want to make sure that for everyone, we have good connectivity and it benefits both personally and commercial.
Happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so if there are no other questions, I'd like you, to thank you for your presentation, Mr. Patton and also Ms. Dewing and to the department. Thank you, Ms. Cole, for coming over and sharing your experiences with us. And there's no action that's required, so you can go, you have your, go forward with your record. And thank you for being such good sports today as well.
Get away, riff.
I think we're going to take, go into closed session. So pursuant to general provisions, article of the annotated code of Maryland, section three dash three oh five, B three and B seven, we need an acquisition to discuss the acquisition of, of Harp, H A R P P, property or matters directly related to, or matters directly related to, thereto and to consult with council.
Second.
Motion and a second. Okay. I oppose. Thank you.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We need a motion to ratify, so we're back in open session and motion to ratify the action taken in closed session?
So move, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Before you begin, where's our planning director? AWOL. Okay.
She's hanging out with Winnie the Pooh in the back.
I love that.
Well, you can, we can get started, yeah. And that's what I'm...
I'm loving that.
I'm waiting for our planning director. Okay, so, all right, you know, let's, how about we go get started then with item, we'll start with item three D, but we may have an interruption. Okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Derek Berlage, acting deputy director and part-time rocker. I'd like to introduce this item, which is something new and very significant, which is a proposed six-year master plan program. And as you know, Plan 2035 was approved by the county council five years ago. And one of the most favorable trends in land use in the county right now is that Plan 2035 is actually being followed by other agencies of county government. It is a living document, it is not a plan that is set on the shelf. It is a plan that is beginning to affect policy as well as affect the course of development. And Plan 2035 had many recommendations in it, but the single most important recommendation was that the county needed to focus more its growth and development around transit stations, around the other Plan 2035 centers and get away from a pattern of sprawl that had prevailed in the past. And the reason that was the most important recommendation is that it's the one thing that will enhance our economy, protect our environment and help the county budget because of the infrastructure costs associated with greenfield development, which, which the plan says we need to see less of. And so, as I say, it has really had an impact. Biggest impact, of course, is the new zoning ordinance, which the county council approved, which contains a new set of zones that are specifically designed for the transit stations and the other Plan 2035 centers. The Economic Development Corporation, in addition, has focused its energies on the three downtowns and the two future downtowns and has made a conscious decision to be especially vigilant about encouraging economic development in the... in those locations. And best of all, in the application section, we're seeing more and more applications for development and high-quality mixed-use development in our Plan 2035 centers. So what Kip Reynolds, and she's worked very hard on this with her team, is about to show you, is the next logical step in making Plan 2035 the guiding land use document for the county, which is for the planning department's six-year master planning program to be geared to the priorities of Plan 2035. And our goal is to present this to you today, get your feedback, and then in the spring, it will be presented to the County Council through the FY21 budget discussions, in an effort to have a dialogue with the council about which master plans are most needed, not just in the next year or two, which is how it's typically gone in the past, but actually talk strategically about which master plans are needed in succession over the next six years to best realize the goals of Plan 2035. And so I wanted to give that by wave introduction, since this is a new initiative, and turn it over to Kip and her team, who will explain their proposal.
All right. Good morning. Kip Reynolds, Division Chief, for the record. Before we begin, I actually want to introduce Jonathan Green. He is one of our new planners in Neighborhood Revitalization. He hasn't been before you, and we want to give him a shout out today because we're very happy he's on board and he actually prepared this presentation today.
We're happy to have him.
Again, Scott Rowe led this effort. He's Supervisor for the Long Range Planning Section, along with Adam Dotson, Supervisor for Placemaking, and Fred Chatura, Supervisor for the Neighborhood Revitalization Section. As Derek said, the role of the master plan, sector plans, and special studies is really coming, being led by the Neighborhood, the Long Range Planning Section. So that is one of our, we have other work program items in Neighborhood Revitalization and Placemaking. So I really just want to set that context today. So I'd like to go through the six-year work program that we're proposing, and we can answer questions along the way. So really, the question is, how do we decide which projects to do? We're focused on which sector plans, master plans, or studies should we be doing over the course of the next six years. So the first item we're asking, the question is, which master plan recommendations are still valid or possible? Just because you're an old master plan, doesn't mean you're a bad master plan. So we really keep that in mind. The question is, is the vision still viable? Or is there some change going on in the neighborhood that makes us think it's time to update the master plan? We also have to ask ourselves, are there other ongoing studies that we need to wait for before we undertake a study? For example, if MDOT is undertaking a bus rapid transit study in a certain corridor, we might say, let's wait for that study to be completed before we begin our master plan, because that will inform the recommendations. As Derek mentioned, the new zoning ordinance presents great opportunities, but we also have to recognize that we have a lot of master plans that have old DDOZs or Transit District Overlay Zones that are no longer going to be applicable. So we need to focus in those areas and some of those communities to move them forward. The other question is, if we do a new master plan, what is the impact to the surrounding community that may not be the subject of this master plan? So we sort of want to look at that in context of like corridors and greater areas to see if we need to add those to the next year. Yeah, next slide. Sorry. So before I begin on FY21, just a reminder for FY20, we actually have four major projects we're currently working on. We're working on the Bowie Master Plan. We're beginning the West Hyattsville Sector Plan, the Fort Washington Transit Village Study, and the Tacoma Langley Study. So in FY21, we're only proposing one new sector plan, and that is the Adelphi Road UMG-C, UMD Purple Line Station Sector Plan. We're proposing this plan in this area because it's the last station that doesn't have a sector plan that's been updated to reflect the new purple line station. We feel it's very important. The purple lines is estimated to go online in 2022. And again, the, this is a local center designation. It's a campus center. The station is on the University of Maryland property, but it's the surrounding community that is seeing increased development pressure. In FY22, we're proposing three new projects. One would be the sectional map amendment for the adopted Adelphi Road Purple Line Station Plan, which we estimate will take 16 to 18 months. The second project is the new Carrollton Regional Transit District Sector Plan. Again, this is a former TDOZ. We need to evaluate the boundaries because of the Annapolis Road Glen Ridge Purple Line Station, which is nearby, and we need to sort of make, make this a true sector plan with updated goals, policies, and strategies. And from the growth policy map, it's a regional transit district. Also, from the strategic investment map, it's one of our first order downtowns. The third project is in, we're going to study the revitalization opportunities for a few shopping centers along in the Clinton Corridor. With the new zoning code and the work by the Redevelopment Authority, we feel there's an opportunity to help some of these shopping centers transition into maybe mixed-use center areas or use the Commercial Facade Improvement Program. And this is based on the 2017 Retail Market Action Plan and also the recommendations from the Subregion 5 Master Plan. In FY23, we have three new projects proposing. With the completion of the Bowie Master Plan, we will begin work on a separate work program item, and that's the sectional map amendment. Again, as a reminder, as part of this work program, in the future, we're proposing to segment out master plans, do the land use plan first, and the second item would be a sectional map amendment. The second project is the Morgan Boulevard and Vicinity Sector Plan. In 2018, we did an action plan that looked at sort of near-term action items. We also feel, we want FedEx to remain, but we also think we need to start planning in case something happens and the lease expires in 2027. So we feel there's an opportunity to look at the Landover Mall site, FedEx, and Morgan Boulevard surrounding station. I know it's a delicate issue, but we sort of need to start thinking about that now, given that it takes two to three years to do a, a sector plan. And again, the growth policy map, these areas are local transit centers, employment areas, and established The third project in 2023 is the Port Town Sector Plan, and this will really focus on the communities of Bladensburg, Coleman Manor, Cottage City, and Edmiston. We're seeing a lot of growth in this corridor and the Route 1 in Hyattsville down to the district. We feel there's a lot of revitalization opportunities. It also gives us the ability to define the neighborhood center for Port Towns. And remember, the DDOZ is going away, so we want to, you know, be prepared. In FY24, we only have one new project, and that is the West Hyattsville sectional map amendment. And even though I say there's only one new project, you have to understand we have like three or four major things coming in behind it. So the long-range planning staff, you know, we have limited capability. So we're sort of, we're focusing on two plans a year. So in FY25, we're proposing the Sutland Regional Transit District sectional map amendment. This area will implement some of the Southern Green Line Station Sector Plan recommendations. There is a legacy MUTC in that area, and we'd like to reclassify this area to the appropriate regional transit district oriented zone, given the Plan 2035 recommendations. Oh, I'm sorry. And also, it's a second round downtown. I missed my cue again. The other project is the new Carrollton Regional Transit District sectional map amendment. Also, in FY26, we'll do the Port Town sectional map amendment. We anticipate these tend to take a year to a year and a half, depending on the size of the area. And we hope we won't have that many mapping requests, given the new zoning ordinance, but it allows us to do some fine tuning. The second project in FY26 is the Capitol Heights and Addison Road Local Transit Center Sector Plan. We're seeing a lot of development activity along the Metro Blue Line. We have this Central Avenue Connector Trail Plan. Both of these stations are opportunity zones. Womata has recently done an RFP for their property that Adams has been working with them on, and also the town of Capitol Heights has an RFP for property in the vicinity. The growth policy map identifies these as local transit centers, so that, again, these are areas that we're focusing, we want to focus new growth and development.
Can I ask you just something about the Womata part on there? So, in like DC and other areas that have higher density, a lot of times you'll see either projects right adjacent to the metro or actually on top of the metro, so you have direct access into either commercial, retail, or residential spaces there. We don't have that quite in our, our county yet, but we've got the purple line coming up and then all this development around Capitol Heights. Are these plans going to propose any of that kind of development that might be in conjunction with Womata agreements?
Yeah, I think really the focus of the new zoning ordinance, and Scott can speak to this, really does allow that activity to happen where the centers are supposed to be mixed-use centers, you know, a mix of commercial, residential, and employment. I think the RFPs that Womata and the town have been doing allow for that vertical mixed-use development, and that's what they're scoping out. I can't speak specifically to that procurement, but that's sort of their goals, as I understand it.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great, as we, as we continue to push transit-oriented development and try and push people into higher-density areas to take advantage of the transit. You got to build right, right there on the transit.
Right. And I think conjunction with the work that the Long Range Planning Section is doing, Neighborhood Revitalization Section is doing a lot of PED access studies with countywide to sort of make those last, first and last mile connections and encourage that. So we've been having a lot of coordination meetings with Department of Transportation, our Redevelopment Authority, and the local DHCD to look at financing and ways for communities to take advantage of the various programs.
Cool. Thank you.
So this last chart really is a summary of the memo and the presentation that we provided today. And the map shows the anticipated start year by fiscal year for the various projects. With, you know, we understand that every, the goal is every year to come back to the board and sort of update you on this proposed work plan, and it will evolve depending on different situations or requests from the council or the, or the board. But we feel this is a good starting point for this discussion. And again, our goal is two master plans a year and/or studies, and that includes sectional map amendments. So that really concludes the presentation, but the team is available for any questions or comments.
We may have some questions. First, let me thank you for a thorough presentation and for carefully selecting the choices, because we can't do so many per year. It's an impossibility. Now, this, of course, as you said, will go before the council, and things may change. But hopefully, even if they change, I mean, we can make our case, number one, number two, that people will bear in mind that we can only, we only have the capacity and the ability to do more than two per year. So that, you know, as we talk about our work plan, and, you know, it's important for us to remind everyone of that. And people talk about taxes, you know, our administration tax goes to the, addresses the planning department, and we'll be giving a briefing on this in Annapolis pretty soon. But this is Exhibit A as to what our administrative taxes go to. So I think it was carefully prepared, and, and so many of these I'm actually really excited about. And we, you know, we worked on the Port Town so, so many years ago. And I can remember Reggie Baxter working really hard on it too, and others. And so it's, it's, all of these are really good, and that one touches my heart along with some others. So thank you so very much, Justice Reynolds.
Yes, yes.
You did a great job.
I'm a minor player, but yes. But I did bring my land use law book.
Great person to choose. And then, I know we have some other comments, but I'd like to take a moment to, well, first, let me see if there are any questions before I take a moment.
No.
I have a question.
Okay.
Question. We're commenting on a question, just sort of in this photo, one thing that I think would be great as we go forward with all these plans is the mural that you see on the side of the building where Franklin's is at. That is consistent with the Arts District Plan, where we have public art in that area. We have murals. It's on the bridge right on the other side of the, the building that you can't see. And throughout that area, now we're coming out with other statutes and wayfinding devices and incorporating that. To the extent that you can do that in other areas and, and have sort of a common theme in other areas like that, that's very helpful. I've got a lot of feedback when I've been talking to commercial tenants in those areas, people who are coming through there, they're actually starting to identify through it. If you just were to go in this area, there are some vacant lots that we've approved some of the development on that are just going to take a while to get off the ground. But they've used that opportunity to have one of the shops paint on the sides of the buildings and continue that art theme. And that's had tons of people coming down from the university, out from DC, and they tag it on Instagram and social media, and it's really helped that particular area have sort of an identity. So having that kind of placemaking identity, I think is going to be important as we go forward with the plans, whatever their, their placemaking might be.
Yeah, we would love to come back another time and talk to you about those activities that we are actually working on. We are doing a wayfinding plan for Northern Gateway. We are working on sort of mural applications through our PMAC program. Adams Group in the placemaking section has been working with Capitol Heights and others to sort of get the foundational pilot project for tactical urbanism, working with parks about pop-up parks and potential murals. So we, we've seen a lot of wayfinding requests come in, and so we've been working with communities on that. So we'd love to come back and brief you on those. So Northern Gateway, along with Countywide, has been doing the Route 1 Corridor work too. And we're doing some other work in Brandywine, actually, on that through the SARC program, to sort of wayfind to the new SARC facility. So we'd love to come back in the next couple of months and talk to you and give you updates on those various programs.
That'd be great. And then the question I had is, with these different plans, one of the problems that we're having right now nationally and in this region is that housing just can't be built fast enough to accommodate some of the demand, and the prices are outpacing growth in income and rents as well, are outpacing the income growth. And affordable housing is, is a challenge. So.
Workforce housing.
Yeah, workforce housing is actually something that we, we lack a lot in this county. So to what extent do you know that these plans are going to sort of facilitate that or make it faster to kind of get those on, on stream? Because that's also a comment that I've heard in the past, is just it takes too long to get those things built and approved through the county regulations and bureaucracy that people have to deal with.
So I think it's approached on several different avenues. And one, the new zoning code does allow a mix of uses in, in housing, and that Derek can speak to. So we hope the code will allow that and make it easier. We have a lot of leeway in our centers and other areas. You know, the county, DHCD, the county has approved the Housing Opportunities Plan. That really gives broad direction about housing policy for the county, and there's a Housing Opportunities Work Group that the District Council has initiated. And we've met with DHCD on some of their other programs. But we will always, when we're doing the master plan, include DHCD in those discussions and look at the findings from the Housing Opportunities Plan. There's broad policies in that, in that plan from workforce housing. And affordability is a key, but I think the new zoning court does allow a mix of housing types, and that's why it's so important to get through the countywide map amendment process.
And how, and I don't, I don't know if maybe one of the, the others want to comment on it, but how, to what extent are we interacting with the County Council members, the new ones, to tell them about these sort of patterns and how they can potentially promote legislation that would be in support of what we've been doing? Because we haven't been getting everything that, that's in the housing goals and initiatives that we've been trying to push. And I'm hoping that some of the new blood might be able to help encourage that.
Yeah, I can address that, Commissioner. Two points. First, as Kip mentioned, the new zoning ordinance allows housing in more zones, and it allows denser housing in more places. And so the new zoning ordinance by itself will provide a lot of new opportunities. In addition, the County Council has established a Housing Opportunities for All Work Group, which is a work group focused on implementing the Housing Opportunities for All document that the, that the County Council received very recently, that I know you're familiar with, which is chock full of recommendations for increasing the supply. chock full of recommendations for increasing the supply of affordable workforce and market-rate housing. And we'll be attending those meetings, and I can tell you that at least some members of that council-sponsored task force have indicated they want to explore inclusionary zoning. And that's not in the new code, and that's a topic about which there are many, many views, and has to be approached carefully, but they are going to address that question. And so I expect within a year or two, that issue of inclusionary zoning will probably be before the council in some form.
That's good. I think that's one of the big things that we missed in the zoning. The zoning re-rates is great, but I think that's one of the big things that we missed that we should have hopefully included in. So to the extent that we can provide our expertise and really dialogue with those new members who are interested, that would be great. If we can kind of encourage them and provide them the resources they need to come up with appropriate legis, or legislation that we think would be appropriate and helpful in conformance with what we've been trying to do.
Agreed, yes. And we have had those conversations with the new members as well as.
As well as existing, yes. Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner, if I could just tag on, that Scott wrote with the Long Range Planning Section. If you look at the four plans that we're recommending through this work program, each of them present a unique challenge to the county in that they're places with strong transit infrastructure that we anticipate are going to have dramatic real estate pressures and housing pressures, and they also currently have a large single-family and multifamily housing stock that is currently affordable for our workforce. And so how do we preserve some of that? How do we make sure that we have a range of housing types at different price points? It's a challenge at all four of those areas in different ways, but especially along the border with the District of Columbia, with the Port Towns and with Capitol Heights and Addison Road C Pleasant. Making sure that as we're planning for new development, the new zoning ordinance provides for a lot of opportunities for us to provide new development, making sure that we are also looking at preservation and at opportunities to mitigate or reduce displacement as much as possible.
Yeah, that's one of my concerns. The opportunities are great. It gives us a nice tool to be able to do that, but my fear is that they're actually going to be misused, and they're just going to be investments of money into certain areas that are not going to provide the kind of housing for existing residents to be able to remain, and for us to have a wide range of them. That the incentives are there to just to profit maximize and build developments that are high-end, and that would be nice to have in our county, but we also need to make sure that we don't forget about the people who are here, and that we have a wide breadth of representation across income, racial, economic, social, economic kind of status. Thank you.
I have one question.
Commissioner Drago.
I like the plans. I have one question. Where is the Fort Washington Village?
So in this year's budget, the request was made to look at, the Huntington Creek Plan identified nodes, and so there's a couple nodes along Maryland 210. We've identified one to do sort of an evaluation of the new zoning code, how we could, how that could maybe transform one of the shopping centers, also looking at some key parks and trail connections. So it is a study, it's not going to be a plan, because we already have a really good plan in that area, but it's really about encouraging development and working with parks and the Redevelopment Authority.
Because I did hear some comments. In fact, I think councilperson Monique Walker is having a town session with regards to one of the shopping centers where there's a guy that's been vacant for at least two to three years.
And so I think we've identified the area that she's interested in. We're going to pursue the consultant to do that work this year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to also compliment you on the plans. It looks interesting and wonderful, but I can assure you that there may be changes. I can tell you that when I looked down and I saw, of course, I immediately went to the Sutland Regional and Capitol Heights, and the years that they are listed here, and, you know, it's appropriate and it's fine, but I can tell you that there are council members who are going to be looking at those years as well, and I want to compliment you on the work that you've done.
And I think we understand it'll be these conversations, and we'll just be important to sort of move things around.
Right.
Right, and I agree. And we will also be coming back to you probably in a month or so with our Plan 2035 indicators, giving you updates on the growth policy goals to also sort of educate ourselves on how things are trending, and that will also help with the budget.
And the education, helping the council to understand that, I think is going to be very critical as well.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I just want to say two things. First of all, Mr. Statura, I know you're sitting there. I haven't seen you back down here since your recent loss, and we wanted to let you know that we are remembering you and keeping you in our thoughts. We know it's very rough, finding your mom. Okay, okay. And also, I need you to invite someone over to the podium, Ms. Turnquest, come on over.
Uh-oh. It's just the socks.
Okay. So Ms. Turnquest has been, Amber Turnquest has been a planner with the commission for two and a half years, working in the subdivision and zoning section. She's done such a great job, she earned her AICP and was promoted to the Planner Coordinator position. She's been Chair of the Subdivision and Development Review Committee, SDRC, for the past five months. I hope that's not what drove you crazy or anything. And has been working on the Zoning and Subdivision Ordinance rewrite core team to implement training, outreach, and education regarding the new ordinance. She's been a dependable professional. Her presentations have been extremely professional and extremely competent, and she's been dependable in assisting many applicants, citizens, and colleagues during her time, and her contributions with the department are very, very much appreciated. I know you're leaving the commission, and I know, I think you're leaving the area. You're leaving the area.
Yes, ma'am.
As I understand it, you're going to the Midwest?
Yes, ma'am.
The Midwest, okay.
Oh my, where are you going? Oh my.
So you heard that Inquiring Minds wanted to know here. So, but we really enjoyed having you. She hasn't said, but you know, she's going to have the opportunity to speak.
We don't want to hear it.
But we do want to say, I mean, you've been, you know, such an asset and such a, you know, great addition to the planning department, and which in turn benefits the county. So we really hate to see you go, and, but I say this all the time, once a part of the commission family, always a part of the commission family. And there have been many, many people who left the commission and came back. Exhibit A, exhibit B, exhibit C, right over there, and right, exhibit D, okay? So so many, so many of us have left and come back, so, you know, just remember that opportunity may exist. So, and I would offer the plan director any comments that you might like to make, or Mr. Hunt?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Ms. Turnquest today. She's done such a phenomenal job, and she's such a professional in everything that she does within the commission. She's represented the commission as well as definitely the department at multiple meetings with applicants for different development cases, and it's been just a true pleasure working with her. I've been, I know for myself, there have been many times where she's come into my office and offered suggestions on improvements and things that we could actually do, of actually, you know, taking the opportunity to make those improvements, and they actually worked. It's been a true great pleasure working with her. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Turnquest?
I'm going to miss you.
Go Gamecocks.
Anyone else?
I am just speechless, and I am sad, and I'm going to start crying. The whole nine yards, you have just been, it's all, it's been a pleasure watching you and listening to you, just a terrific professional, and I'm really sad. I'm serious. I really do hate to see you leave. You can come stay with me. But it has been a delight watching you, just so professional and just absolutely terrific.
Thank you.
I appreciate your professionalism and your succinctness and your clarity in presentation, so I'm going to miss that.
Thank you.
But I know you'll be successful wherever you go.
Yes, sir.
Well, maybe not.
That's one of the things that I definitely appreciate is when you're up here presenting, you're extremely clear, and you're always super organized, and that makes it a lot easier as we're going through the issues and cases.
Absolutely.
When, some of the cases are rather complicated, and you'll just hone in, like write down the details that we need to focus on, and that kind of ability to just dive in and just focus people on what they need to know and really need to decide about is helpful in this particular job, but I think it's going to be a transferable skill that you're going to be great at wherever you're ending up at. So thank you for all the help and for the really good guidance.
Thank you.
So Ms. Turnquest, your turn.
So for the last time, I get to say the following words. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, Amber Turnquest with the subdivision and zoning section. It has been an honor to serve the residents of Prince George's County for the last two and a half years. I've enjoyed my time with the commission and the ability to work with excellent techs and planners with the commission. I appreciate the support that I've been given and the encouragement, especially while studying for the AICP. I've learned so much that I can definitely say I'm a stronger planner, having worked here, and my experience is here. And I would just like to say a thank you to everyone who's asked about my family after Hurricane Torian hit the Bahamas. So I definitely thank you for this Prince George's County family, and Prince George's County Strong. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to a large Midwestern city.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. So, all right, so Amber, all we can say is thank you so much. We wish you the best wherever it is, and we know that you will continue to soar. So ladies and gentlemen, please get, let's send Amber off with a hearty round of applause and great big appreciation for all that she's given. We know she's a rising star. She is going to soar. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. See, even he had something to say about it. So, no, the mask there. Mr. Hunt, is there any additional business to come before planning board today?
Madam Chair, we'd offer a riddle, but I'm going to stay away from that right now. That's all we have for you today.
What's your riddle? Wait a minute, we have our riddle. We have our riddle. What's the mummy's favorite genre of music?
You got me on that one.
Rap, baby, rap. Time for it is adjourned.